Okay.
All right.
This is panelists, search for panelists.
We're live.
We're back to 2020.
Yell at them in here, please. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January 24th town council meeting. Before we begin, well, we'll begin with the pledge allegiance and honor of the South American serving charter.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. Hey, for the housekeeping, in the event of an emergency, please exit out two doors, either one of the two doors to your, to your left here on the side of the chambers, or the front door here, we will meet across the street at the school administration building and wait further instructions. And that gives our town council a roll call.
Ms. Japuza? Ms. Japuza?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Present.
Mr. Hapson?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Our Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you all. Tonight, we do have our, well, President's executive summary, I do not have an executive summary tonight. But today, we do have our first order of business is our joint school committee, town council legislative priorities, and we do have our delegation. Some are in-house, Senator 70 is here, and online, we have Representative Cortland, Representative Paul, and Representative Tom. And on the school committee side, we have in-house, we have Mr. Vannen, and online, we have the vice chairman Juan Carlos Paeo, Fred Barber, Karen Kate are here on the school committee side. So prior to the meeting, the council and the school committee did provide our delegates, the, our legislative priorities were on the council side and on the school committee side. You can briefly, I can have Vice Chair fail over the school committee priorities, if that's okay, and then I can give an overview of the council priorities, and then we turn it over and get some feedback from our delegation and see what your, what your thoughts are, what you're able to help us with. You know, from a town's perspective, we appreciate any, any support that you could provide us in, in helping us with these priorities for the town. And some of these priorities you will probably recognize from prior years, but we do have a few new ones. So with that, I'll turn it over on the school side.
All right. Thank you so much, Kevin, for the introduction and the opportunity to speak this evening. Members of the delegation, thank you so much for the opportunity as well. The school committee has come up with this year with a couple more legislative priorities than in years past. Typically, we tend to stay to one, about three, but this year we have five. And first is, and I think it's evident by the majority of us that are virtual, to expand Open Meetings Act to permit in-person, virtual, and hybrid meeting options for the public. This also allows for us to meet this way, but also solicit feedback from our community members that may not be comfortable, able to give feedback that's super vital, especially at the school level. Up next is, and I'm going to, I'm assuming that everyone has read this, but I will kind of give a 30,000-feet overview. And our second one is state aid funding formula. And really, COVID-19 has distorted state aid for under-reported free and reduced lunch students. And it is a huge part of the funding formula, what typically, year after year, we have seen roughly, and if Chris is there, he could definitely correct me or correct me at a later date. And we'll see a roughly $150,000 decrease year after year in our state funding. Based on the free and reduced lunch numbers, our number is looking at roughly 1.1 million. And the whole, if we don't adjust this, then we're going to have, see significant cuts in our funding for this, this coming year, and it's something that we really need to fill the gap in order to be able to have a fair and equitable budget that allows us to be able to serve our students. Third is our unfunded mandates, and you'll see, a recent example is Senate Bill 86 and 5084 that requires family hygiene products. As much as we think this is a worthwhile initiative, and it's something that should have been done years ago, and it does account for about, excuse me, $700 to implement this, and that's just to be able to get it started. And, and we're really looking to do this as part of our capital improvements in coming years, so being able to just do that and incorporate that makes it that much worthwhile. But being able to, i- if we weren't in the situation that we were in, and that, that we were going to be making these adjustments to our bathrooms at the schools, this would be a complete unfunded mandate, and it is moving forward. Fourth, I feel like we'd say this year after year, special education. And it's to examine and change the statutory requirements that local education agencies have to contribute to special education per pupil amounts to DCYF for students placed in residential settings. And the overall formula used to identify LEAs per pupil spending amounts for students with IEPs placed in these residential settings. And lastly, it's statewide education, really examining the effectiveness of statewide transportation for students who attend school outside of their residential LEA. And this really accounts for a significant part of our budget. Also, it is part of the budget that we have to account for regardless of any changes that we can make to the budget. It tends to really be out of our control. So being able to not, being able to get support from the state when it comes to this would truly benefit our budget and when developing it, and allows us to really use the, the resource that we do have for students that do attend schools in the district. I think that covers everything.
Thank you, Mr. Paeo. Mr. Morris, you had a question?
Do you comment, actually?
A comment?
That must be a surprise.
No? I just thought it would come out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry, this morning, it's 50 Chris in court, and I want to speak in favor of the school departments, school committees item on school funding formula. It's hard to tell how much this has cost us over the last 10 years, but the old-school funding formula has come to an end, and we're talking about re-establishing a new one. Roughly, it was about $2 million over the 10 years, roughly somewhere around $20,000 a year. Did pay attention to it, but that's, that's hard to keep track of. But in any case, I think at the minimum, we should be asking the assembly and our delegation to adopt a policy of first no harm. In other words, don't reduce our current funding levels any further. Because that $2 million, a very large percentage of that was borne by the taxpayers who had to make up the difference. When the state cuts funding to education, generally speaking, in most of these years, the school department didn't reduce its expenditures accordingly. So clearly, the taxpayers are making it up. So that's not that our whole council, the school committee, they fault for that, because of their jobs. But the point is, this cost us a lot of money, and this isn't a minor issue. This is a major issue. And our delegation ought to be willing to die on this hill for us.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. And I, I do, we also like to emphasize that this is the state aid formula, it's something that we've been bringing up every year. We feel that, you know, we've been on the short end of that every year with the reductions that they're, that the town has experienced. So this is obviously something that is very important. And I guess at, at this point, maybe we could just stick to the school committee priorities and get some feedback from our, from our delegation. Seeing how this is virtual, I don't know how we're going to tackle this, but who would like to go first? Well, if you go, Vice Chair, Mr. Gordon, would you like, that's Ms. Hamilton suggesting.
Oh, I was gonna, I thought Senator 70, since he's in the room, he's definitely the more senior.
I think he said, I think he was, I think he was, I think he meant, then we'll go ladies, ladies first, yes. Vice Seniarity.
Okay.
Actually, Representative Donovan might be more senior.
Really? Yes.
All right, we're way off track already.
Well, I could comment on transportation. Every year, we put in a bill trying to get transportation money back in. I don't, never know what happens to it. It never makes it through the finance. But the funding formula is set until, and Senator 70 can chime in on this. You know, we, we try to do this every year, but it's set until it's changed, and right now, it hasn't changed. I have to say, however, and I get this answer from leadership all the time, is every year, they increase aid to education to the cities and towns. It doesn't ever seem to be enough, though, because, you know, just like in Bristol, I hear the same thing. It's just such a, a drain on the, on the, on the property taxes, on the revenue from that. I, I'm trying to think back, I'm, I'm, what else, what else came first before that?
The open meetings, eh? Or the, on the school side?
Yeah, the school committee. What, what else did you say, Juan?
We had open meetings. I, 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 I closed it down mentally, so let's see, the state funding formula, unfunded mandate, special education, and statewide transportation.
Yeah, so I, transportation, we try every year. I know I sign onto the legislation every year. You're talking open meetings. What were you meaning by that?
Being able to just pass legislation that permits in-person and virtual or hybrid for meeting options for public, kind of like we're, we're doing today.
Correct. Yeah, and I know we have an executive order right now to do that, but in order to keep that up, we have, when he shuts that down, we have, we'd have to do legislation for that. I, I'll have another conversation with Representative Cortland and Senator 70 about that. I don't know if that's a constitutional thing, if we'd have to change something. I'll look, I'll look into that, though. Do you have any thoughts on that, Senator 70?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there were a series of bills that, that state government floated a last session that, you know, didn't pass. But this was, was one of them to allow for continuation of, of, of virtual meetings, where you can vote and actually have a full meeting. I don't believe there's anything constitutional about this. I think we just have to pass the law that, that does affect, if you recall from the papers, a few weeks ago, there was a gunfight between the legislative leadership and the governor over who should do it. I don't think it's pressing to whether we can do it. As it turns out, the General Assembly outweighed the governor and hung him ahead and extended the, the executive order along with this to take place and for you and for everybody to vote. For all. We'll certainly continue to press that. I think it's a, it's a great idea. I think it expands participation and, and to my knowledge, it worked fine while we were doing it, and we're back to it now, so I think it's probably beyond time. Excuse me, probably beyond time to make this a matter of law.
Yeah. Well, I know that, I don't know, in Bristol, boards and commissions, there's more attendance when we have the, the Zoom option, you know, and sometimes they have the Zoom option, but you can't vote. So we have to fix it so that when you're on Zoom, you have a vote, not only a voice, but a vote. So that, that, that's something I'd like to look into. I'm on, on several boards, and I would, I would like state, you know, quasi-state boards, and I would like to be able to sometimes Zoom, because sometimes I'd have to go to Providence at nine o'clock in the morning, drive all the way home, and then drive back to Providence in the afternoon for, you know, for session, and it's just, you'd get better participation, I think, all around if we had, if we all had that option. So I'm, I'm for it, if we can do something about it. How about you?
We did have a bill, we had a bill in the House last year. The House passed Representative Marzakowski's, which would have extended it, extended the Zoom hybrid option through 2023, but it failed in the Senate, unfortunately. It didn't move forward in the Senate. So I was trying to find out from the sponsor if he put it in again for this year, and I will ask him again tomorrow when we see him.
Yeah, let's do that, and let's see if we can not only extend it to 23, but to see if we can make, make something, a hybrid model more permanent. I would, I would really like to see that, too. Sure. I think participation would go up, and, and it's always better when you have more participation in your government.
I agree.
Yeah, I just want to add, too, I, I think it makes it far easier for the public to participate as well. I know I've talked to several constituents who are home with children, and it makes it very difficult for them to participate if they have to get childcare to participate. So if they can zoom in and listen, I think it really makes all of these meetings far more accessible to everybody so that people can participate more in the process.
Yeah, and you might get, you know, we're always complaining that we don't get, you know, the diversity of age, too. I think if you got this hybrid model passed, you'd get younger people willing to, to come in and, and serve on these boards and commissions, because they wouldn't, you know, they have families at home. And if, you know, they didn't have a babysitter that night or something came up, they'd still be able to participate. So I, I'd really like to see it. I thi- I think it would be, it'd be better all around. So.
I wanted, can I go back? Oh.
If I just want to interject, if I may, Mr. President. When consider, considering this topic, please consider not just statute changes, but infrastructure funding. Not every community not, is necessarily set and ready to go with the, the best up-to-date equipment and broadband available to the public. So I think infrastructure should be thought about when making these rule changes, that, that the rules need to be changed. But the underlying infrastructure to support it also needs to be addressed.
I think, I think we, we made sure that all the towns had that kind of infrastructure when we, when we ran into the pandemic and a lot of, everything was going online. Don't, I, didn't that happen?
Yeah, and that's what the extension that we passed in the House would have extended that access that, of the Zoom that the state bought for all the towns and committees. I think that was part of that bill. Because you're and it would be good for the state to support that across the state. I don't know if we get that indefinite or not, but we can discuss that with our colleagues in the House and see if we can find support for that.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of support for that.
I was gonna, the, I think the governor has to, the priority, I'm not sure which number we're on, or it's on, but the governor did put the harm homeless in his budget. That was mentioned in State of the State last week. I do get a little worried that we may be setting ourselves up for some kind of a cliff if we all of a sudden go back. And we don't want to see too much of, you know, too many years go by where there's been no adjustment, because then the adjustment will be larger. So I am concerned about that, but I also understand the predicament that rising property values are having on that element of the funding formula and how hard that's making Portsmouth.
Yeah.
On Portsmouth and the school committee.
Yeah, I think the, the whole harmless, I mean, I'll have to go back and check, but I, I thought that was just related to reductions, uh, whatever time of the year when your comp numbers is coming in, and that stuff, that stuff been diminished through the pandemic.
I think you're right.
You gotta be held harmless for a reduced headcount. Now, the, the, the argument you're ringing up here about distortion to the free and reduced school lunches, that is a real problem. We'll, we'll run out of time, folks, see what can be done about, about that. That, that does hit you. It is an important part of the funding formula. And if, if we're not getting those counts accurate, you know, that will exacerbate the problem that we already have with the funding formula. And the funding problem, the fundamental problem, the funding formula, is that what was on the downside of that equation? Because it looks at, and it, it creates your relative wealth, it rates the number of free and reduced lunches, all of that stuff, so you've got to be very careful. You know, where you can take action for that one. Now, you know, I don't have much respect on the relative wealth, that's the taxes and everything else that works. That's not an update. The real issues, in my view, are categorical, that's what we, especially, that's never worked, right? It's not working right today. I know there's another, another thing in here about the headcount from DCYF and how much a school gets reimbursed when a DCYF student comes into the system and requires special ed services. That needs to be fixed. The transportation problem, that somebody, like, a transportation issue around, it's another categorical. And when I say categorical, what that, what that means is it's not a function of the formula. That's, that's a year-by-year budget decision the General Assembly makes on that stuff. So there isn't any, well, it's driven by, it's driven by budgetary decision, it's not driven by anything real. You know, and to be our real costs that everybody is aware of, that the cities and towns are caring for special ed that I'm getting covered, and we will continue to work on that. The categorical, when, when we did the funding formula analysis a couple of years ago. The categorical budget actions for the categorical cost elements in funding schools, everybody recognized it's not right. By a country model, that's right, and work on that. Unfunded mandates. And, you know, you're gonna take all the fun out of being in the General Assembly. You know, and this one, I, I think this is, this is not a particularly good example here. Everybody's put a lot of heart into making sure this, you know, real practical health issue got dealt with. And by the way, it's, it's, it's the, it's the urban schools and all that, where the issues are most pointed, I think, to think about this. So, I mean, we'll do what we can to figure it out. Hang on. Did I touch on everything? Any, any other questions?
I, I think one did you're missing, you're kind of hinted on is the, you know, the infamous, the money is going to follow the child, so as you mentioned, DCYF says a child down here moves into this, moves into the school district, we don't get the funding for that. That's, a special education child is good range of $100,000, $200,000 here.
Yes, yes, it could, and it's recognized as a big problem, we're working on from a statewide perspective, you might imagine. The money is huge. That doesn't mean we don't have to fix it, we do. So far, you know, a reasonable solution has eluded us, but we'll keep on. I mean, everybody understands what that issue is. And, and that feeds into the issue of that child is transported from where they live to a school. It's, it's a, there's a whole host of problems. I mean, DCYF is an issue, you know, so.
I, I understood, but it, it just has never happened in the 10, when the 10-year original plan started, money was going to follow the child, that never happened. We, Representative Donovan mentioned that every year, they put more money into the budget, but yet every year, we lose more money. So where is that money going? Like, it, it's painful that the town of Portsmouth, the school committee, and the town council, we do a good job of managing our budgets, but we get penalized every year for doing that. Where cities and towns do a really horrible job managing their budgets, and they get more money for it. It's time to hold some of those cities and towns accountable and say, hey, you know what? You're wasting the money that you gave.
Oh, yeah. Until it comes time to say, man, here's how we want to do that. Defense, excuse me, Paul.
I, I, I understand.
And, 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 and let's face it. Portsmouth runs a good system. There is lots of community support, there's lots of family connectivity to the school day, and that is the case everywhere. Okay, and, and I'm not gonna make excuses for anybody. I mean, there are issues everywhere. I mean, it's nothing, nothing that Providence has taken over by the state. It's not for nothing that the state has done a terrible job running the Providence schools, and we're rethinking that whole thing. All I can tell you is the devil will, will keep working on it. The problems are particular here. When you talk about Providence, Stockton, One Sock, Central Falls. And we'll, we'll do the best we can to some degree. I think we are going to continue where, where the communities that can't afford it, once again, we're right back to the funding one. And the reason why Portsmouth took it on the chin for $200, $250,000 every year, I think we're done with that now. So those annual reductions, I think we're past that through the 10-year. So those reductions are passed. All that money is gone, it's out of the program, so that is an issue that we have to deal with. But the long and the short of all the funding, of course, to some, some things, the town of Portsmouth can't afford those changes. That's how the funding formula actually works.
But, but as we look at things, and the majority of, of funding circumstances tend to benefit inside of the group, 295 quarter, we'll do One Sock that, that's a little higher. I've been asking for years for our delegation to get along with the other suburban delegates to kind of form a coalition to work towards getting better funding for suburban communities, Portsmouth, the middle towns, the South Kingston's, the Westerlies. Get together and at least use some of your clout as a group to say, hey, guys, we can't keep destroying our communities to better your communities. And taking that money away, and if, as you've mentioned, it's 10 years past, so that $2 million is done. Roughly. But yet, we're not seeing an increase, and Representative Donovan just mentioned there's been increases every year. Even if it's $100,000, that goes a long way. I mean, we're looking for 10 grand to put in feminine hygiene products. I, I think we can find that money in our budget pretty easily. But when we talk about money continuously taken away, and one of the previous governments, now in Washington's goal was to limit the increase in property taxes, she surely missed the mark on that one. So I, I'm asking for all of your help to kind of get together as a coalition and say, hey, we've got to stop this stranglehold that the inner city has on all of the budget, and try and work together with the other communities to say, hey, no, we're gonna say no now. We have a representative who runs the, the House Finance Committee, living in Newport, living on the island. He should feel this kind of pain in Newport, and he should be able to better manage how these funding formulas work. That's all. That's all.
Yeah. Karen Dave has her.
Okay.
Thank you. Um I I wanted to just make a couple of comments about the funding formula. Um first of all. Excuse me, Senator Senate, Senator Seventy, you're correct that the ten year period when we knew we were going to lose. Around two hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years. That period ended actually the year before last. Um and so uh but last year, despite the fact that that ten year period was over. We had an additional cut in state funding. Tied primarily, I believe, to property values. Um this year, as uh Mr. Perro said, we are again, we are looking at an even bigger potential cut this year. Um again, related to property values. One of the things that makes this year unique. Is that because of the quarantine, during the quarantine, free lunch was available to every student in the state. And so no one collected free and reduced lunch data. That does not exist for the last year or. Um I'm not sure about twenty twenty, but certainly the last school year. Um and so there are other factors, other indicators of um. Of wealth uh that were used by the funding formula, I believe primarily having to do with property values. So um there's sort of two issues here. One is. The longer term need to negotiate a better a better funding formula that's more equitable in terms of how. How districts are treated across the state. But there's also an immediate issue about how the funding formula is going to be. Um calculated this year when no one has provided free and reduced lunch data. Um and if in in our opinion, it would obviously be. A particular shame to lose even more money um in our state funding. In a year when the funding formula can't be used as it was intended to be used.
Well, I think that's, you know, two good points. I mean, the uh. Free and reduced lunches, that that is a metric, and if we've lost sight of how to calculate, that that's a problem. And we'll take that back. The funding formula. In fact, works. In some measure, on the calculation of relative wealth. And yes, property taxes. Portsmouth certainly Portsmouth uh uh rose significantly. Other communities had that same issue. Uh there's been no change to the funding formula. Um I will go back and uh. And uh certainly within the Senate Finance Committee. You know, bring up how we can adjust the funding point, but that becomes a very simple thing. To do because once you start tweaking it. The dollars go. Unmanageable. But that's not to say we shouldn't take a look and try to figure out. You know. What to do about uh. I I think I think there's a way to get our arms around. Uh to create reduced lunches. It's probably going to take more labor than it has in the past. We have to ask people if they have to. Let you know that they uh they qualify. Beyond what can demonstrate. Creating the funding formula to try to uh. Attenuate a rapid uh. Property value increase. Not so easy. But I'll take that back.
Thank you, Senator. Did you have a, your hands up?
Yeah, I just had a question. Maybe our legislators can explain to the public because we've been talking about the funding formula for the last fifteen minutes. How, who for, who formulates the funding formula and what effect do legislators have on its ultimate? Details, is it?
It's um, it was developed um more than ten years ago um by, and it was adopted into statute. So that formula, and if you recall. Uh Councilwoman Yuzafuja, you and I attended the Senate's um study commission. And so we heard a lot of the issues um particularly around the categorical funds that Senator Seventy was talking about. And um making those more formulaic so that they are more dependable and not. Um at the whim of the legislature, so because they are not inside the formula right now, the high cost special ed and the transportation. So um that we don't vote on that formula. That formula is like self. That's the whole point of having a formula. And uh so we vote to support the budget. Now, the state could put more money into the pile. And uh Rep Donovan is correct, every year they put more in. The governor says we are going to fully fund the formula. But this, we could always make the pie bigger. Maybe, I mean, we, that's a, that's an a a tactic. Whether there's support across all the um, all the um, you know, the seventy five members of the House for that, that I don't know particularly, you know, this year.
No, I I represented, I I certainly remember going to the the Senate hearings on the funding formula. Um with you. And uh all I can say is that it's still a little bit of a black box. Because it's hard to tell how decisions are getting made, what criteria are being used. And um I actually don't think that we can have a suburban coalition as our as um councilperson. Uh Hamilton suggests, considering Barrington has always been getting more money than than Portsmouth. And um Newport is not a suburban uh ally. And Representative Abney would not. Necessarily be in our court on that. But. That said. I think you guys could do a little bit better job explaining to folks. How the funding formula gets created and also, you know, to talk about the budget process. So that it's clearer to folks how the money is, the pie is being divided. Because it is. I know you think it's. It's uh something that.
Don't think it's simple. No, I don't think it's simple. I think the complexity makes it difficult to explain to the public. So I agree with you in that regard because it has that quadrat- quadrant formula.
Quadratic formula, no.
Right.
Even beyond that, when we were attending those hearings, Terry, they could not explain the bases for picking the numbers they picked.
That's right. But those numbers are embedded in the statute right now. And so, you know, who would pick the next numbers would be if we open up that box. And I think that's what Senator Seventy was alluding to. There's no guarantee that it would come out better for Portsmouth if we open up that box and pick different numbers.
But you were. Perhaps, but there is no understanding, having no understanding of where those numbers are coming from is probably a bit more dangerous than simply leaving that box alone. Because we are going to get cut again. Under the new formula. That's my understanding.
And I wonder if Barrington, since we're outside that ten year window, is Barrington really, is that a fact that Barrington continues to get more money? I'm not sure if that's a fact or not. I haven't looked into that.
Yeah, they have, they have been heard.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know, I'm sorry, do we know if the School Committee Association, the Superintendent's Association have any recommendations or suggestions about changes to the funding formula? That should be potentially submitted as in in for changes in the statute?
Um I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. Um I attended a workshop. It's probably almost two years ago at this point, um talking about the funding formula, how it, what constitutes the funding formula. Um and at that point, they were talking about a commission that had formed. In um I want to say twenty nineteen or perhaps even the commission might have formed in twenty eighteen. But they created a list of about twenty recommended changes to the funding formula. And those were to be brought to the legislature.
That was the Senate Commission that Linda.
Yeah.
Talking about.
So I don't know what the status of all of that is at this point. But certainly if if the changes that they were talking about were made, that would help, you know. Um pretty much across the board. But um I, you know, I don't know where we are on that at this point.
I think the status is that that commission was a Senate commission and that we either need to have a joint commission that includes House members. Or the House needs to have its own commission. The fact that it only happened in one um, one chamber is um. Not a good sign that uh that the um, that those points, which did make sense. I thought they were good recommendations. But uh the fact that they were only within one chamber does not give me great hope that they are going to be adopted like that by the House. By the House without the House going through a similar process.
Um Jim would uh would probably know, but I think. Forming a commission like that has to come from the leadership of both the Senate and the House. So we, like, we don't have that power to form that commission. Am I correct, Jim Seventy?
Yeah, that that that's right. That's to be formed by the uh. Essentially by the Senate President and Speaker.
Yes.
Ten years gone by, uh Speaker Matty Yellow was not a fan of joint commissions for whatever reason. It would have, it would have been better. I'm not saying you would like the outcome. Because once again, once you start fooling around with the innards of the formula, and by the way. It is. Somewhat complicated to explain, but. Essentially, it's just a weighted average. The problem is the things being averaged and the weights relate to. The wealth of a community. You know, and its relative degree of uh of poverty as measured by uh. Uh the free and reduced lunch program, so. You know, it's. It's not gonna work in in our favor at this, at this point in time, given the. The 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 wealth of our taxpayers. There are things we can work on. Uh there is a, there is a a proportion of the formula called the state share ratio. The problem with the state share ratio is when you tweak that number. You get a very large result. In terms of dollars. And then it becomes, okay, how are we all reporting this? And it stands right now, it's a. At very least, what what can be said is that every year since the formula of this, by the way, it's been the same formula all along. It hasn't changed. There is no change. Problem is, factors, they consider it's are changing all the time. The state share ratio. That's the place I would certainly look to. How well that will work for Portsmouth. Pretend that you start pulling. With that, uh like I said, it has a large impact uh across many. What can't be said about the formula, it has been fully funded every year. I think this for the last. Couple of years anyway, it's been in a neighborhood of three hundred million dollars. Additional money, new money injected into our educational programs statewide in order to. Fund what the funding formula spread across every community. Says we should be spent, and that's based on that weighted average. Once again, a lot of the issues the communities have aren't related to the funding. It's all the other stuff that is included. And that needs to be, and that's the special ed costs, transportation, and some of the other categories. Oh, continuing to work on it, but. The reason it's been slow. Getting to a resolution is because it's a very hard problem.
Okay, uh this um. Obviously, this is a very, very important topic, uh not only for, you know, for the school, for the town. And, you know, we we definitely would appreciate any any type of uh. Help along the way on the funding. I know it's. Just from listening tonight, I know that this is something that's not gonna happen overnight, uh but maybe through the process of uh being persistent, chipping away at it. Maybe able to make some headway in in trying to just provide a little more uh quality to the to the community. If nobody would object, I'd like to move on. We could get through uh, you also have our our council priorities. Um I can touch base on quickly. And then we could just take a few minutes uh to get some feedback. I think number one, we've already covered on was it very much a duplicate of the school committee side, which is the uh expanding the open meetings act. Virtual hybrid meetings. Number two is is one that's been on our priority list uh for a couple of times, a couple of years now in a row. Instead, reverse the the past tax cuts for the wealthiest Rhode Island, Rhode Islanders. We definitely have some uh. Some links here that provide support and justification for this request. Number three is, I think, a new one um on here, but that was also. Touch base a little bit during the school committee side, which is to help improve and protect internet service. Uh this is a big topic for. For the islandwide. Uh I think most residents will tell you that uh they. From working from home, working remote, being home, um the uh, the the internet service is definitely. Come up, come up short in some cases. Uh so if there's any opportunities to to improve or enhance our our internet, possibly getting fiber to the island. I know that that's something that's the hot topic. Um there's money, seems to be some money available for some of the recovery act. Things, anything along those lines. Would be very helpful to the town. Number four is limited possible fuel with the structure construction. Again, there's some reference here to national grid and. We definitely have some some links here for some additional support information. Number three, I'm sorry, number five. Then, again, on our on our list in the past, it's uh private corporate gentlemen who make universal healthcare approval. Uh again, there's some very good backup here. Be used to you and your efforts. Uh number six, I think we also uh put that on our list last year. The ever increasing recreational marijuana facilities that seem to be. Making their way into the state. There's opportunities there. You know, one of these facilities end up in your in your community. You know, can can be some uh funding for the, for the for the municipalities that'll offset some of those unintended consequences. Staff legislative priorities, uh just touch base on a few. Promote the state takeover, maintenance of the Penns Highway, train road. Maybe uh provide funding for Shell Bridge, but that was something that uh we're working on, seven. Ask again uh to introduce a bill to amend the zoning enabling act. State municipalities may have visions of zoning ordinance to consider proposed land uses that are not specifically listed. So worry for me. Next one is the request our legislative delegation to introduce bills next year's session to amend our municipal court enrolling statute. Again, these are just from the town. We did provide additional uh links for supporting. Create a centralized business database to effectively communicate with our business. And last one is to create a cabin level position tasked to improve and coordinate. Coordination of electronic connectivity commerce. Again, there's some 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 hold and stick along with the future requests. These, these are some of the priorities on the town side. Uh if any counselors would like to add or further explain uh from my overview or any of the the staff. And we can get some feedback from our from our legislators. I'll start with the one I threw on there for recreational marijuana. Obviously, we already have an marijuana facility in town as soon as. They'll fulfill its design. It's going to be turned into a recreational marijuana facility. Part of any revenues generated from that facility should go back to the local town. And that's that's also the experience. Whether that's three percent, five percent, ten percent, I don't care. We are gonna air the brunt of it. Have conversations with the facility and their. Understanding of the fact that it's gonna get busier and are looking for alternate locations off the deep path, but. It's certainly gonna cost the town more money in terms of. Police presence, possible fire presence, and also the effect it'll have on our school age children and the availability for marijuana on the streets. So. We need to make sure that any funding, any part of that. Bill that gets introduced has funding that goes back to the local community. And we shouldn't have these on every street corner. It should not be liquor stores like they are forward right now. I can see no more need for. I can see no more need for one for every fifty thousand, sixty thousand people. Something like that would be about twenty to fifteen to twenty for the state. Uh, I'm sorry. Mr. Crosby.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to put in a attaboy for the enabling legislation. To allow the municipalities to consider proposed land uses that are not specifically listed. We um. Because of a of a court decision a while back, uh, we are restricted to. Specifically, the land uses that are in our zoning ordinance. And 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 I would very, we, our our intention is to amend our zoning ordinance over the. Months and and years ahead to make it compliant with our. Our our comprehensive plan, but at this point in time, we really are. Hamstrung to to um. To to land uses which are specifically. Annotated in Article Five of our zoning ordinance, and it is, it's, it's a problem, and we really need to move that forward. We really need to have the ability to be able to. When proposed, to modernize our ordinance, and so the when proposed land use has come to us that we can. We can deal with them in a uh, a more modern way by a special use permit and so forth, and at this point in time. We're restricted to the specific. Listed uses in our in our land ordinance, in our zoning ordinance, and so we need to change that.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Great, Representative Quirkman.
Uh, yes, um, thank you for giving that great explanation, Gary. Um, I have that bill drafted and the Portsmouth delegate, all the Portsmouth. Delegation in the House have signed on, and I'll be submitting it, but it would be great to have a town resolution on this bill that I could take to the hearing. So if you all would consider that maybe in your next agenda, um, that'd be really helpful. And I'll keep you in you informed of when that hearing's gonna be, Mr. Crosby, so that you can come and testify or testify via. Webex about whatever we're doing when the, when the hearing time comes.
Thank you. I think that, I think the way it's, it it it's absolutely impossible for any zoning ordinance to list every possible. Land use, and so we need to be able to modernize and have a way to be able to deal with. New land uses as they come before us and 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 that has to come not only from. Legislation from the General Assembly, but then for us to be able to amend our zoning ordinance as well, to be able to. Reasonably deal with this kind of stuff.
So I reintroduced it on the Senate side as well, and as as Terry's pointing out. A uh, a short resolution from the top. Indicating importance. And some uh. You know, and some uh, some testimony when the hearings come along, a little help. I mean, these things get bonded up in the end of session, uh, negotiations between the House and the Senate. Last year, I was uh, I was hopeful that it would, that it would pass on the Senate side, but it came out, so. We'll give it a try again.
We, we did get the other bill passed last year for um, the, uh, on the appraisals. The, that was on your priority list last year, so we did have one win.
I wanna, I wanna thank Rep. Court for putting that in in the House, and I was happy to sign on and certainly will be um, supporting, um, trying to push that through this year.
Thank you all.
Uh, Mr. Jufusen.
Yeah, I just like the legislators, I know you can't push everything we've asked for, but could you address the ones that you would be pushing for in the upcoming session and how?
Well, I could tell you right now, the the list that you gave, I I'm on board with with everything. My only concern about the, like, most people with marijuana marijuana is um. Is law enforcement and the stresses it puts on that, the law enforcement community. And I don't know what we can do about that, uh, but I could, we can, if anybody has any ideas, I certainly am open to um. Helping with that, that issue, but everything you listed, um, I was, as I was listening and I I'm reading. I agree with you. I just want you to know that, so.
Um, do you, on the item regarding the business database, um, is. Is that coming out of anywhere? Is there a, an idea behind that, any model legislation, or is any. You're asking the state to do that, or you're asking Commerce to do that?
Yeah, we've been working on this. We've been working on this for almost, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
We've been working on this for almost five years. It roots in Rhode Island general law six point one. That requires a hard copy notarizing to the register of business. There's been five types of legislation coming here to change the general law. The Department of Business Regulation is working on it, Secretary of State is working on it. What we need is some kind of law that automates the process and gives us a centralized database that has emails, phone numbers, where we can dialogue with businesses.
Okay, so would I be good to talk to Liz Tanner at DVR?
Yes, and I can send you copies of the bills that have been tried in the past few years on this specific subject.
Okay, are there, is there legislation from other states that they can reference?
I don't know, but I can research that. We've done a lot of research, first the the. Agreed, the Newport Chamber of Commerce is working, we're working with this with Liz Tanner, and I'm sure they have researched all the similar legislation.
Yeah, they must have it, they must have it somewhere.
Yeah, if there's a a bill that's already, somebody's already going to put in, we'll be sure to sign on to it, or if nobody's putting it in, one of us can. Can introduce it.
I can give you the bills of tried and failed.
Yeah, and then we can, and then we can also look to see if other states have any, any, any kind of legislation that we can look at. Um, so we don't have to rewrite the book.
Can do. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to speak to the. Number one topic on both the school committees and councils, which is the extension of the Open Meetings Act. To permit in-person, virtual and hybrid meetings. And for the background of those people who may be listening. Uh, the Open Meetings Act along with the Access to Public Record Act are the two laws together referred to as open government laws. Passed in the interest of the people, citizens of this town and citizens of the state. Were not passed in the interest of the government officials. But they were intended to provide the citizens an opportunity to maximize participation in local government and state government, although that's a problem. So in any case, um, that's the intent of the law. Supreme Court of the state of Rhode Island was a famous case in which it says that. In this case, we have two proposals coming forward. School committees. Proposal addresses providing a service, in other words, electronic access for citizens to their meetings. Council's one provides for that, and and I don't have any objection to that. If you wanna do that, I'd like recommend against it. You should be here, if you may wanna find out what's going on. And, but the one that the council's proposing covers remote participation by elected and appointed officials. I've read the governor's emergency, not emergency, executive. Action twenty-two dash one, very carefully. And we have tonight only a minority of the members of the council present, so obviously the council thinks. That the governor's executive order applies to them as well as citizens. I disagree, but, but I don't want, I think it's clear that the council interprets what they're proposing the. Assembly passed, it will allow them to remote participate. I think that's beyond pale. We need to have our elected officials where we can look them in the face, talk to them out in the hall if we want to. Hear what's going on and participate in that manner. Once we go to remote business, and we just went through a year and a half, almost two years now. So two years?
Almost.
Almost, March sixteenth, twenty twenty. So it's almost two years. We've been through all of this stuff. We know what it works, how it works, now it doesn't work. I'm aware that almost every public official I've ever talked to or elected official likes the system. And I'm aware that you probably do too. But as one of the foremost practitioners and participants in this system over the last two years. I can tell you, I don't like it at all. So I don't like the system, but it's mostly the fact that it separates me from the members of. Government that I may or may not have elected, but that we've all elected, and you have to see what you're sitting there. So that's the point. I think that's important that you understand that when you propose this sort of legislation, again, school committee is not doing that. School committee is only talking about citizens. When a council proposes this, they're taking away some of our rights, I guess, of citizens, at least actions. Abilities to come and speak to you as citizens, and I don't think that's appropriate. We have the opportunity, and New England is the basis for the open town meetings, to continue at least that part of it, so I'd like to continue it. Without the remote system. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm, if I may, just comment on the list. And also, also just a reminder, um, I I'm certainly in support of making uh. These public meetings more accessible to everyone. It's something that has been made a huge difference in making people, allowing people to participate more actively in the, in the process, so. Um, I'm glad to see that this is a priority for both the town council and the school committee. That being said, uh, should we need to work remotely, I want to assure Mr. Fitzmorris and anyone that's listening that, that. As elected officials, we are always available to talk to you, so, uh, you know, if you have questions or concerns or issues that you wanna discuss, please feel free to reach out to your elected officials. We are here working for you, and so we wanna hear from you and and are happy to have those conversations, so just as a reminder. But I do just wanna go through some of the things on this list just to um. Maybe provide a little bit of feedback as to where, um, where I'm, where, what I saw when I looked through this list, and I was happy to see. You know, the items that were included in the, in the town's priorities. Uh, going through the list, I already talked about the Open Meetings Act, but uh, the Open Meetings um, access. But I also wanna talk about, uh, the number two priority for the town council relates to the, the tax cuts for the wealthiest Rhode Islanders. Uh, that's another piece of legislation that I have also signed on. Uh, what we're, what we're talking about there is tax equity, right? We're, we're, we're looking for the wealthiest of Rhode Islanders to pay in a similar manner to those who are not. Whose incomes are not as significant as the wealthiest Rhode Islanders, and that will help provide us with some needed revenue for some of the things that we talked about. For education, for example, where we, we're talking so about how. Uh, our education is not funded as significantly as we'd like it to, and so if we can um, put together some. Tax equity and provide um, a broader ta- tax base on our, the wealthiest of Rhode Islanders, that will allow us some additional revenue to address some of those concerns. So I'm happy to have um, signed on for that as well. Uh, as far as improving the internet service, I agreed, uh, you know, we need that broadband commission that passed in the House last year, and, you know, we need that to get through in the Senate. We just saw, there was just a recent report out talking about how underserved the people of Newport County are and the people on Equidnic Island. And it's something that we're gonna be continuing to focus on this year, making sure that we are addressing some of those inequities in internet service across our area. Uh, we are all um, far too aware of it, and and certainly it's, it's um, something that we are very focused on and trying to address. Legislatively, and I'm encouraged to see that there is gonna be some funding, federal funding coming through to address some of those concerns, and we just need to make sure that we. Hang on tight and make sure that we get some of that revenue to address some of those things. Number four talks about the fossil fuel infrastructure, and I just want to assure everyone here. Rep. Courtrend and Rep. Carson have had started a couple of years back the Equidnic Island Climate Caucus. Which I'm happy to participate with, and uh, what, as as a result of that, a number of our local legislators across the East Bay and Newport County. Are working very hard to come up with ideas and solutions to transition us away from fossil fuels and. Uh, move us towards uh, greener, um, more renewable alt, um, energy options. And so I want, I want just to reiterate to the council that this is something that has been a a very big focus. For um, most of the legislatures and legislators in the East Bay, we're, we're really focused on that and and. Having, it's a, it's a constant conversation for us about what we can do, and there's a lot of ideas. That are are coming forward, and I expect to see a lot of um, legislation, a lot of potential bills coming forward in the, in the coming months related to that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna tie up everybody's time, but I just kinda wanted to go through some of that and let you know that those are certainly some of the, that your priorities are my priorities. And that um, we're, uh, we're working really hard to make sure that we're gonna address some of these things, and I really appreciate the the feedback. And that you're taking the time to put these priorities together to to help keep us focused on on the issues that are most important to the people of Portsmouth.
I, I'd like to make a comment if I can. Um. I'm working right now, and it's just in its infancy, infancy on um, with climate jobs Rhode Island and a lot of the building trades um, unions. It's gonna be part of finance, it's gonna be part of the DLT, it's gonna be part of um, commerce. In trying to transition people that are in the fossil fuel industry or depend on the fossil fuel industry for their jobs. Um, alternatives and look for ways to um, keep these people employed or retrain them. And like I said, it's, it's quite complicated, but um, we're, we're, we're working on it now, and I hope to have it done. Um, sometime before the bit, the budget comes. Um, it might be a commission. It might be part of an apprenticeship program that we already have in place. But it's coming, so I just wanted you to know that um, I'm working on at that aspect of transitioning from fossil fuels. Thanks.
And I too have a bill that I'm working on specifically in the heating sector, and it kinda goes hand in hand with a bill, bill that Rep. McGaw is working on. To um, enable communities to um. Do not allow um, additional natural gas hookups, and then uh, my bill would. Has a, it's complex as uh, Rep. Donovan just shared, uh, because there's a lot of moving parts, but it provides a. A potential funding structure to uh, move uh, the industry away from um. Fossil fuels to uh, renewable sources for for heat, whether that's geothermal or heat pumps. You know, whichever, we'll see, it's, it hasn't been introduced yet, I'm working on it too, and um. It'd be, you know, I'm sure it's gonna, we're gonna have a lot of good conversations in the prospective committees that these folks get assigned to.
And just, just to clarify, uh, when Rep. Corfren mentioned that, what we're looking at, I I believe is we're, we're looking at building codes and how we can create building codes. Uh, to reduce uh, fossil. and how we can create building codes to reduce fossil fuel utilization and to encourage the use of renewable energy sources. So whether or not that will include any restrictions on fossil fuel connections for new construction is, is still being determined. So just to make, just to, a point of clarification. One point I missed, and I will just bring it up. One of the items on your list was related to accessible healthcare for everyone. And I, last year I submitted a resolution asking the House to support a national universal healthcare system. And I have resubmitted that bill again this year as well. So really making sure that people have access to healthcare is something that I'm going to continue to, to work for in relation to a universal healthcare program. And also looking at the impacts of COVID and how we can reduce the strain on our hospital system and our healthcare workers going forward, so that when we need access to healthcare, it's available to us.
Okay, we're going to jump to one of our attendees. There's a hand up from Catherine McManus. Catherine, you can unmute, please. Catherine, can you hear us? Hold his hand down. Hand down. Okay. We answered the question. We're going to go with that. All right. Well, I think this was a great discussion tonight. We appreciate your participation with us in this discussion. You have our lists. If there's any further information you need from us, please let us know. But we'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. And we look forward to working with you to try to address these issues for the town. Thank you, Sony. Thank you, Representatives Portman, Donovan, McGaw. Thank you all.
Thank you for having us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to new business number two. And that is our joint town council school committee budget presentation. Thank you, Mr. President. Slide. Just jump right into this. We are now well into the development of the proposed budget for this year, twenty twenty-three. What this brief is intended to do is provide you some of the highlights with respect to budget drivers as we see them currently. So we'll cover, we'll, we'll cover those four areas, revenue expenditures, capital, and then initiatives. And so, starting on the town side, with respect to revenues, with respect to the car tax, we expect the number of taxable vehicles to drop between fifteen and twenty percent. As in previous years, the state has pledged to make municipalities whole. This could represent up to a twenty-nine percent decrease in the motor vehicle portion of the tax line, so they continue to do so. With respect to new housing and building construction, new housing construction continues to level off. But we still continue to see increases in the number of permits for renovations, additions, and reconstructions. So we do expect to see an increase in those revenues. And then with respect to the American Rescue Plan Act, funds received as part of this act will be placed into a special revenue account used in accordance with council direction. These funds, as a reminder, must be obligated in twenty twenty-four and expended no later than the end of twenty twenty-six. Late last year, the council do authorize the establishment of a public safety capital plan. A portion of the ARPA funds was used to start that program, and it will operate in the future with a portion of ambulance revenue. So that revenue will be lost to the general fund. But that will be offset by the decrease in the number of capital requirements for fire safety equipment in the traditional town capital improvement plan. We are hopeful that we will see a diminishing effect on overall revenues due to COVID. But now we are seeing a larger impact with respect to the pandemic's effect on the consumer price index, which will, I anticipate, have a significant effect on overall anticipated expenditures. The school side, Tom.
Thank you, Serena. So outside of our local revenue that we are able to get from the town, our next biggest revenue source that you know is speed, and I will believe are a lot of the discussions already had on how that, that those numbers are continuing to look unfavorable for us. But there was in the first draft of the preliminary speed for next year, it was looking like we would have been kicking over a million dollars. We talked about some of those pieces, thank. I can report that late last week, Governor McKeever put forward his proposed budget, which is looking much more favorable for us, but we're still just losing about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So while we certainly hope that that is the budget that gets adopted over the, the previous proposal, for many other reasons, we talked about this evening, the money formula is not working in our favor enforcement over the last few years. One positive note on the revenue side is that next year, our tuition agreement, little confident, is a ten-year agreement that actually ends this year. We've already negotiated a one-year extension for, before they go up for a, a longer contract. So we, we know with certainty is that yield that was negotiated, we will see an increase of three hundred thousand dollars in that official line. So we will certainly look to see what comes next in our agreement, little confident after that.
So with respect to expenditures on the town side, we will begin, or we have begun collective bargaining negotiations with three unions. These collective bargaining agreements will need to be accounted for in the next fiscal year. We are also projecting a flat or a small increase in healthcare premiums due to favorable utilization trends. And our old pay-go expenses projected to slightly increase as the number of future retirees increases. Finance is working hard to try and increase the OPEC fund this year to decrease our liability risks. With respect to the Town's defined benefit plan, the actuarially discerned contribution, the ARC payment that will decrease next fiscal, fiscal year. Unfortunately, as I stated, the current inflation rate is up. It's currently at seven percent. This will have a ripple effect throughout the entire budget, prices for goods and services increase. One ready example will be the transfer station operations budget. The operator's contract is tied to the CPIU for garbage and trash collection, which has risen over four point eight percent over last year. Cool set.
So we are in negotiations with both of our labor unions. And a person that comes to mind before, for the last few years, we've been doing one year extension with the Blues bargaining units, but they have, both indicated at the beginning of this year, they would like to go to full negotiations. And ideally, we can both them at the same time. That is the situation that we find ourselves in. Those negotiations are ongoing. On the healthcare side, so far, premiums, just like on the town side, are looking to be somewhat favorable for next year. Retirement, we will see an increase in the ESR, ERSRI, hedging contribution for certified employee side. Now, non-certified side, the, the ARC for the town, hedging contribution should actually increase this year. And you know, that's due to the fact that less and less employees are in that system. Transportation, we are expecting to see a decrease of four point nine percent as our busing contract is tied to the rate of CPI.
Next slide, please. So with respect to debt service, we will see a decrease in bond debt service capital lease payments next fiscal year. The bond for school capital will be issued this year, so the overall decrease in bond debt service will not be as much as the current debt service tables indicate. But the school demand for capital funds in our budget request will be negated in the next fiscal year. Excellent. And from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, the debt table has remained the same. We will see a drop in debt service by approximately one million dollars. Okay, that will, that won't be as much as anticipated once we issue the school bond for school capital. Next slide, please. So to wrap up, expenditures, as previously stated, when you add up the school and the town, we have five union contracts that are expiring in June thirtieth. These negotiations are ongoing, but they may not be settled prior to the submission of a proposed budget to you at the end of March. We will do our best to capture anticipated budget impacts for the next fiscal year. We're happy to report, though, that our collaboration between the school and the town across three important areas, facilities management, information technology, and the school resource officer program continues to function well. And we will seek to continue this in the next fiscal year. With respect to capital, in this slide, you see the projected capital improvement projects that we will continue or seek to start next year. Of note, as we are able, we will try to factor in in this next fiscal year, roof repairs to town hall, an LED streetlight conversion project, which will allow for the turnover responsibility for streetlights on state roads to Rhode Island DOT. We will pursue stormwater mitigation projects, we will go boat rent renovations, continued renovations to the fire station, and increased cybersecurity. And then, as we do from year to year, we will continue to phase in the facility condition assessment, Jacob's report findings, into the town CIP as well. Next slide.
So capital on the school side, of course, we are getting ready to move into the construction phase for the projects which are approved by the bond. And I can report that in December, we did receive the final approval as anticipated from the Department of Education. And we were able to demonstrate that the bond has given the number. Since that time, we have selected an owner's project manager for this next phase, and that will be the Paragon Company. And we have started to work with Paragon to put out RFQs for the architect for the construction phase, and so that is a process. We should be reviewing those closing soon. And then once the architect is the place, we will move on to secret things scheduling projects and selecting construction company. So that will, for the next few years, obviously be the front of the school arm, you know, capital budget. And realize that one of the things, I did just want to use the opportunity to bring your attention is that while that will be ongoing, what we see as some significant needs, and we have a plan to address a large portion of the cost of these projects, but we do, we are at the point where tennis courts at the high school, the stadium lights, these are kind of in the order that right now, we would see those could obviously change, replacement of the turf field. And then, once, once those, those three would be the biggest priorities, once those were addressed, we would see probably a overhaul of the booster shaft block of the rest of the area. So those, those are obviously not in the health and safety capital area. So we are going to start to put together a, a plan to address those needs. And I'll have much, much more detail closer for you, but what we would see is hopefully, we will be requesting use of impact fees and will tap to be used for school construction purposes to support each project.
Next slide. So the initiatives that we will pursue, they will, I won't just all know we've addressed most of them, but some big initiatives that we see as important in the next fiscal year, a website rebound, the addition of a, an employee in the recreation department. We would like to restart the internship program. We'd like to establish a budget line for grant match requirements. And then we need to initiate the transition from the dot com to a dot gov domain.
Sure. So outside of the items that I've already mentioned, the, the next biggest area for us over the next few years will be in regards to our version of the American Rescue Plan. And you can call yours referred to ESSR, that's the elementary and secondary schools emergency relief fund. So that's the money through that program is coming directly to schools. So these are the two amounts that will be in process over the next few years. ESSR two was, was already submitted, approved, so that's what we're working on now. Those funds were entirely meant to combat learning loss, so we have things that are placed there. ESSR three funds, you can see they're up there, one point nine million. Those applications are currently out to districts. We have submitted ours already, of course. I have not received feedback or final approval yet. But two big items there, again, these are intended to be used over the next few years. So we will continue to address things in the area of that and training loss. But also, we were able to put it to capital, when we would consider capital projects for the year quality. And those would be in relation to the fourth and high school, part of the middle school libraries and improvement year quality. That those, those spaces did not make their way into the approved capital of projects as well.
So, Mr. President, that concludes our brief. It was high level. This is what we're working towards. We're on track to submit the budget to the last week of March. Prior to that, we will have a meeting to, to review civic support requests on February fourteenth. And the board brief will be February twenty-eight. Thank you, Serena. Thank you, Catherine. Comments, questions? All right. Then we will move on to our consent again.
Second, Andrew Kelly.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jafusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Patson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Ryer?
Hi. Six to zero. Okay, you guys can hold on a minute, stick it out. I'm trying to do it. Yeah, I guess. Yeah. Next item on our agenda is minutes from our January tenth meeting. Move to a bro.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jafusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Patson?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Ryer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. Next item is text voucher. Let's move over to text voucher twenty-two oh one, twenty-four dash oh one to twenty twenty-two oh one, twenty-four dash. Move to a bro.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jafusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Patson?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Ryer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. On to our town administration. I give you Mr. President, Council, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, we have been interviewing candidates for the town information systems manager position since early summer. It's my pleasure to report that we have selected a candidate. His name is Raymond McKenna. He has extensive information systems knowledge and experience, and he's embedded through our current our current consultant. The school IT department, human resources, the police department, and myself. So let me be the first to welcome Ray aboard. He will start tomorrow, just in time to assist us through the council chamber audio visual renovation, which will start this week. And he will initially be co located with the school IT department. With respect to the Rhode Island Levy Cities and Towns Convention this year. It was originally planned to return to an in person convention later this month, but as the COVID. Nineteen infection rates have. Increased, they have seen that to postpone that convention to April twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. They plan to have all aspects of the convention as planned, just on a new date, so anyone who was already registered for. The January convention date will automatically be registered for the new dates. With respect to the comprehensive community plan, just a reminder. That the draft comprehensive community plan is available for review, can be found via a link on the front page of the town's website. In the news and announcement section, public workshops will be held March seventh, March twenty first, and April fourth. Additionally, as I've already stated, the annual comprehensive financial audit or report, which we refer to as the audit, is available through. The finance department's webpage, and the auditor will brief the report to the council at the February twenty eighth meeting. At the last meeting, the council asked me to assess the need for continuation of the Westside Advisory Committee. I'm still looking at this, and we'll come back to you with a recommendation next month. And lastly, with respect to parks, recreation, and open space master plan, there is a survey as part of this development of the plan. We are seeking input from community members through an online survey. This survey has been established so that we can better understand. How residents currently utilize parks and recreation amenities and entities. And if existing facilities and programs are meeting the needs of the residents. And then what needs to be changed or added. The survey should only take about five to ten minutes to complete, and all responses are anonymous. The online community survey will be announced on our website, in the local paper, and can be accessed through the Recreation Department webpage. That conclusion, your performance was.
Thanks, Mr. President. Okay. To qualifications and appointments. First items, appointment to the Bristol Ferry Town Common Committee.
Move to appointments, Genowitz, to the Bristol Ferry Town Common Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. And then we have the tree commission, the reappointment. For so this general. Move to approve the reappointment, this general in this department to the tree.
Second. All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. Next item, school business, our monthly financial report.
municipal council, as of the end of November, the town is one third of forty two percent through fiscal year twenty twenty two. Your day general on revenues are at forty eight percent of total budget revenues continuing continuing to trend ahead of budget. Your day general budget expenditures are right on the market, forty two percent in line with budget, however, as I noted previous in the six months report, that we expect costs to exceed budget due to the university revenue. This past fall. At this time, however, we do project to meet the budget and have a nominal surplus of free.
Move to receive a place on five. All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Moving on to new business. First item is request approval to amend reservation. Twenty one oh one twenty five. Taxation. Those states of certain income health, senior citizens. Approves a yearly update of the tax tables.
Second, Andrew Kelly. All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. Next item is our request permission to submit application for for municipal residency program. Mr. Grumman?
Thank you, Mr. President, these two projects that I'm. Asking the council to approve to to submit an application for a grant. It's the town to forty three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, it gets us about. Hundred and seventy five thousand dollars worth of work on two projects. Dealing with inland stormwater flooding, as you may remember, the the. The municipal Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank initiated a municipal. Resilience program, grant program, a couple of years ago, we applied for. A. A grant which we got, it was a significant grant for three projects that. That dealt with inland flooding. Once we started, we got the grant, once we started delving into. The nuts and bolts of the cost of these grants, the the third project here was the. Founder's Brook, the the drainage. Problem underneath the railroad bridge going to. Conference Point, and that project is is ongoing, if anybody's been out there lately, you'll have seen that there's. A tremendous amount of work that's been done, and we're nearly finished with that project, but we had, we had to. Take the funds from this Riverside Street and from the Founder's Brook. To devote to that project, so. This is a this, this is the third round of MRP grants. The second round. We were closed off from applying for the grant because Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank wanted to. Kind of spread the money around and. Give it to. Other communities, but in this particular round of this new round of grants. They have opened it back up to communities that have. Received funds in the past, and so we're we're going to jump back in and get these to apply for a grant to. Finish off these two projects, these these projects have been. Number one on Brian's DPW list for a number of years, number two. Appeared on our original. Workshop for the municipal grants and. And number three are are now. Appearing on a new initiative that we have been working on with the southern southeastern New England. The SNP program, and they are developed, they're helping us to develop a brand new resilience C I P. To operate in parallel with the C I P that we have. And these projects are on that C I P as well, so. The project deadline is February eleventh, the deadline is well in hand, I have the. Application nearly finished, and I'm asking for the council to, because we are committing. Forty three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars as. Pound cash as the match, I'm asking for. The council to approve. Me submitting the 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 application for this grant.
Mr. President. Yeah, we approve, I have one quick question. This would be funding that would be in next fiscal year, correct, by the time the grant is.
Second, Andrew Kelly.
We have a motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you all, I will cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Okay. Next item, it's a request approval of a memorandum of understanding between Newport County Radio. And the downtown sportsmen regarding the use of a shed structure at Glen Park. This would end the collegiate.
Sure, council president, members of the council, the Newport Radio Club approached the town for the use of one of their sheds located just west of the cow stalls. At Glen Park. They drafted an MOU for our review, and now we made a few changes. With with this MOU, the town would would allow the radio club to store their antenna and all their equipment on one side. And the radio club would make. The the necessary improvements to divide the shed in half, allowing a direct apartment to use the other half. Of the shed. So they just wanted us to bring this in front of the council to see if that was something that, you know, would be feasible, so I'm just bringing it in front of the council to see. If if everyone's on board with this, and if anyone has any comments or any questions.
I like the fact that they've actually taken initiative in looking at how Portsmouth could maintain. Radio communication in case of a natural disaster. Like a bad hurricane, so I think they're actually having them around as an asset to the town, so I'm definitely in favor of this.
They've been doing this for quite a number of years too, down to Glen Park, to set up all their antennas and stuff, so they've been doing this for quite a while.
I just have. Just what I just have, I guess, a question or. Really comes down to, there's no, they're not running any power to the shed, is it just strictly storage?
Correct, yeah, just storage.
Okay, and then I guess my only other. Comment or question would be maybe Mr. Rayner. What about insurance, like, so if this becomes. Do we own the shed? So.
Yeah, they're agreeing that there's no liability associated, it's purely just a place to store the equipment, there's no liability. So if something happens to the loser.
No, I mean, what if, what if someone slips and falls in the shed?
Well, that's. That would be the same for, that would be the same for anybody that's on town property, it's covered under trust.
Okay, all right, I was just more thinking about that, that type of thing. And then I I had a comment on on number ten. Where it says. The the N C R C requested this MOU arrangement be made with no definite termination date. It's kind of like language that allows you to periodically review this. That's kind of loose, and I understand the intent. I I was just wondering if we if we should set a limit so that, just so that they can come back and we could. At least if we have dates in there, we can. You know, we can at least have a discussion when it's just.
We could certainly do that, we had to, you know, solicit or take a look at it, and that's why we put in that last sentence that. Thirty days notice, I had a party committee.
Yeah. It doesn't this. Technically fault, but there'd be ten year lease, whether or not things. So shouldn't it, shouldn't it be a ten year date from today, at least we should put in there?
Not, not, not if, not if it's terminable at will. I mean, I defer to just solicit on that.
Yeah, yeah, I I would agree, the whole point is it's very, it's more akin to a license agreement, we're just letting them use the shed. And make some improvements, and it's not, there's no long term binding agreement of any kind that would implicate the town charter.
Okay, all right.
If I could just thank you. Add that, it was unclear to me when I first saw the document if this was. A binding contract as drafted, or if it was just intended to be a non binding. Document that just set forth a list of. What a general terms might be for the arrangement. Because there seemed to be some mix of the original language, so as presented before us right now, it states that it is a non binding document. If there are binding terms that the town wants to have with N C R C or vice versa. Then that would have to be in some sort of definitive document to come, I would look at this document now with the. Express language in it saying it is not binding as being a. Authorization to have these conversations and put something in place that. Will reflect the working arrangement along the lines of these numbered paragraphs.
Right, and and I I agree with Mr. Katson that this is not. Any kind of binding lease agreement, which is that that provision, number ten, it just says, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna end this. We're gonna give you a thirty days heads up.
All right, that was at least. I had a. I would think I was thinking along the lines of what Mr. Hamilton mentioned with the ten year. Lease, but if that's really not an issue. If if this thing can be terminated at with thirty days notice, if that gives the town an L. That's that's sufficient, so thank you for that. Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, the Newport County. recreational.
Second, second, Linda Ujufusa.
All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero, thank you all. Next, we take correspondence. I have a quick question of correspondence.
Sure.
The first item of correspondence is any report from the Port of the South of the country from twenty twenty. It was done a year ago, where is the twenty twenty one report?
You should ask Mr. Sen.
I should have, but that was later on the agenda. Can we pull this for next meeting and request an updated annual report, because there's a lot more chatter about the community about the situation. By reading this report, should that be solved by. And it seems to me that the chatter is getting worse and not better. So I'd like to pull number one and make a complaint motion to pull number one for the next meeting. And place number two and three on file.
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. Next, we have future meetings, next meeting is February fourteen. Then followed by February twenty eighth and March fifteenth, all seven P M. We don't know what's gonna be. The the, we still might be.
Oh, library renovations will start this week, close next week, training the following Mondays. The contractor. Do it will be here on the.
And there is school department here.
Wait, we want to use it first. Maybe the the size. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Mr. Jufusa?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Katson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Iyer?
Hi. Motion passes six to zero, we will see everyone now. Have a nice day. The press is gonna play us all candy.